Workshop presentation. This is a convened workshop called and convened this evening, July 23, 2024. The order of business tonight is a workshop to discuss the indoor recreation facility. We are joined this evening by McMillan, Pazzin and Smith Architecture Firm, which will be working on us on the design for this. And with that, I will turn it over to the administrator.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. Just a couple of months ago, we had counsel had indicated, and I think rightly so, an intent to kind of set some guide rails on this process on a couple of key areas, specifically women and minority owned businesses and local preference standards. But also to be able to give a little bit of feedback from a listening session standpoint about what some of your expectations are on the aesthetics and function of the building. And then the third would be to discuss the CM at Risk delivery method for the construction. So with that, I've got our folks from McMillan, Pazzin and Smith. KJ Jacobs is here and will introduce his team. But I'm going to ask him to kind of jump into those three things. The last one will be the listening session part where I just encourage y'all to just throw some opinions out about what you'd like to see in this facility as well. So with that, KJ, it's all yours.
Do you want me to stand here and do my best?
Please, yeah. That way it'll be recorded.
Good evening.
And all prices you quoted will be recorded as well, too.
If I put my hand over the mic, you'll know why. Thank you all very much. Just again, by way of introductions, I'm KJ Jacobs, a principal and architect with McMillan, Pazzin and Smith. With me tonight are Lydia Cartwright and Mike Gall. We appreciate the opportunity, I guess officially and formally, to be the lead of the design team for this project. We know that it's significant. The entire four Greer initiative is a wonderful thing that we applaud y'all for, and of course, we're thrilled to be a part of it. So thank y'all for that. We're going to approach the three things that Andy talked about in reverse order, if that's okay. Wanted to first talk about the CM at Risk process. Just make sure we're all on the same page about that, kind of give you our recommendation and make sure we're good to move forward there. The second thing that we'll talk about is the local and minority and women owned business participation, that whole subject and process. And then thirdly, Mike's going to lead just kind of a little listening session to hear, give y'all an opportunity to just kind of talk about what you're excited about, maybe what you're worried about and what you're looking for kind of architecturally and from look and feel for the facility. So that sounds okay. We'll start with CM at Risk. First of all, and I don't want to be condescending, just want to make sure there is confusion around that term. Construction manager at risk is a term for project delivery where a general contractor, a typical traditional general contractor that you know from hard bidding a project, serves in a slightly different role. It's a bit more of an advisory role for the owner. There are other delivery methods where you might hire an owner's representative or a third party project manager who is also sometimes called a construction manager. Those folks are essentially just responsible for holding my contract, the general contractor's contract. They're essentially an extension of you from a contract kind of leadership role. The construction manager at risk or CM at Risk, some people call it CMR, is a traditional general contractor that you are hiring and signing a contract with to then go and construct the building. The difference between a more traditional historically designed bid build process is that the construction manager in that process, the city of Greer will issue a request for qualifications and will talk the local preference and the minority and women owned business as part of that. The city will issue a request for qualifications from contractors. They will then respond with qualifications, kind of a portfolio and a proposed fee and general conditions for the project. The beauty of this procurement process in the state of South Carolina, we've been doing it now for 15 years. Our firm did the first two in the state, helped the state office kind of write some of the contractual language. The beauty of it is that it really gives you the most flexibility within sort of the ethics and intent of public procurement, the most flexibility to select partners that you feel are most appropriate for the project. So in a traditional hard bid process, on bid day, you may have 10 envelopes and you open them up and the low number becomes your new best friend, the general contractor. In the construction manager at risk process, you bring each of them in, interview them, meet the team, have a scoring criteria sheet in front of you and make a qualifications based selection. At that point, you've satisfied state procurement requirements and then they'll go out and competitively bid each of the subcontractor, the site work. They'll go get four site work subcontractors to submit bids for that work. They'll bring that back, they'll evaluate it, and then your team, our team, will have visibility also there to the qualifications and the price from those subcontractors. So we're able to get to that subcontractor level of involvement and can select, I mean, it's perfectly within the bounds of that procurement system to say this site contractor was 100, I shouldn't pick on site contractors, electrical contractor. This electrical contractor was $50,000 low, but we know that the general contractor had three jobs that recently that have gone very poorly with them. So you're able to see each of those bids and kind of work through that process. When I say you, the project team will have that visibility. So a tremendous amount of transparency from the general contractor and in selecting each of the subcontractors as we move through. They, instead of a hard bid in the beginning, in a hard bid situation, we would typically, we would finish drawings, put them on the street and have them submit a final price. In the CM at Risk process, we bring them on earlier and they help sort of value the positive part of value engineering from the beginning and they give us good constructibility advice as we're going through the process. The other part of that is with the supply chain and logistics world that we live in today, with generators having a 52 week lead time at times, they also are on board earlier so that we can identify long lead time procurement items and can get those things, the design and procurement of those accelerated so that we don't finish the building, but we can't put permanent power on it because we don't have switchgear or a transformer. So there are several benefits to that. They sign what's known as a guaranteed maximum price. That guarantee includes what they see in our drawings at the time and then allowances and qualifications around that. And then we work as a team to construct the building within that process. We're doing the same thing with the fire station today. So our recommendation for those reasons is that you proceed with that process and that's what we've talked about sort of with staff leadership. And just wanted to make sure nobody had any questions or any concerns about that before we move. That process would start, we would propose that that process start pretty quickly. So we go ahead and put that solicitation out, again, interview, qualify, select, that is essentially the same process we went through. Go ahead and do that with the general contractors for that process so that as we get into design, they're then coming beside us to help in that process.
Your team does the interviews?
Your team will lead the interview. We appreciate participation in that, but your team will be the ones making that selection.
Yeah, Mr. Bettis, the intent is to utilize the executive committee that's working on this, the same method we used to select the architecture firm. We solicit the request for qualifications. We shortlist them, bring them in for an interview with a five member panel, two staff members and then three members from the executive committee that will sit on that and then make a recommendation for a, in this case, an architect, but in the case we're talking about a general contractor, based on the qualifications and project history, et cetera.
The construction manager at risk, go back and tell me, that's going to be the GC? Is that?
Yes, sir. They're synonymous in this case. The general contractor serves as the construction manager at risk.
Okay, so my question is, why would we not, I've never understood the logic behind doing a design build because inevitably, I believe it's more expensive. And there's, there are government agencies out there now who've made the decision, we're not going down that road anymore because it's costing a lot of money. And I think some of it might be bad contracts or whatever. But as you were chosen, and I don't mean this as an insult, it's just, you came in and did a dog and pony show. You were chosen. So I don't know, and I agree with what you say about picking a contractor. And then it sounds like we're starting to diverge in the way I think in the process you're trying to, what you're explaining. It would seem to me, instead of going with, you've picked the contractor and now you're in the design phase and they're working with you. And you're not going to get 100% drawings. I don't know what percentage they will be, but they will be less than 100%. Why would we not want to get as close, maybe 80, 90% drawings? Give it to the contractor we have chosen. And then you wind up almost with a hard bid because the contractor and the architect and everybody in this project, they have to be a team. What infuriates me about any contractor who looks at a set of drawings and says, well, these are 50, 60, 70%, and I can look at it and say, well, I know that we're going to have to plant grass right here, but it's not in the drawing. We're going to hit it with a change order. That, if that's the way you want to do business, if the contractor wants to do business, that's fine, but I don't want anything to do with them. Also, and I've put this in a letter to Andy or just a memo really, that I believe the city is better off when we keep control under our umbrella, civil, the electrical, plumbing and HVAC. And it does a couple of things and then you're probably aware of it. If you're controlling the civil, you know, we can go out before all the plans are ready and start doing grading. With the electrical, if you, if we're thinking about, you know, wanting to use local outfits, we know the local outfits. The outfit who did the electrical in this building is, you know, two blocks over. I believe that we have staff that should be capable of doing management because the contractor is going to have a manager on site, correct?
They will have supervision. The general contractor will have a project manager on site, that's correct.
We have a project manager. And then when you look at all of the talented staff that we have in the building and engineering departments, as a committee, we ought to be able to look at from design, from day one until it's punched out at the very end. And our folks need to be there from day one to the very last day. I have no issue with a hard bid, provided you've got a good contractor you're working with that you can trust. And trust is everything. But I do believe that hard bid and then the control over the civil and the MEPs is what, that's the way I would go. I think we did something very similar to that with this project, right? We did the civil, electric, electrical, I'm not sure about the plumbing and the HVAC.
So from a...
So let me ask real quick, Chris, to follow this thought. Are you talking about daily, having somebody from our staff involved daily with this process?
We have...
I mean, I know we've got talented folks.
No, we have a staff person who needs to be involved in this project daily, like in the job site trailer. If it's just to show up, ask what's going on and see if what's going on matches up with the plans. That's critical. You know, we, that's what the person does for us. And so, but the committee is, would be a group and Andy can, if he wants to, he can share with you the people I suggested that would be on it. But they look at, they're still in the project from day one, but they're not involved daily, at least weekly, having a meeting and saying, this is what's going on. And then engineering, our building folks, everybody's there can ask questions. And then when invoicing begins, then we all can, they all can go through it and say, because I know, I'm assuming the invoice, you would look at it and say, hey, this is, this is good to go and then it would come to us.
I agree, we've got good folks. And I just want clarification because I had visions of John Google higher holding his heart right now after you said that because with 51 other projects going on, adding another, you know, 60 million project is...
But I think, and here's what I believe about that, is that this is, right now, this is, this one project that we're talking about, it's the largest project we have ever, ever done. We need to have a staff person going by that job site every day in that job trailer.
Mike, you want to follow up on that?
I mean, just a couple of thoughts, y'all. It's a great conversation. There's a couple of points that you made. We think CM at Risk, all of the delivery methods, you mentioned design build, there are pros and cons to design build. I think given the circumstances of this project in its totality, the CM at Risk process makes the most sense. The question about the guaranteed maximum price is a great one. You could, so when you select a general contractor in this process, they will, they will submit a fee and general conditions. They know we will not have completed the design of the building. We will have enough of the design done so they will understand it's a 10,000 square foot, 10,000 square foot facility. They'll know how long it's going to take to build and they'll understand generally the scope. That allows, the fee, you know, fee for a general contractor is profit, okay? That's an easy number. They decide how much money they want to make on the job. So on their form, when they submit it to you, they put 3%, 2%, 3%. They put whatever percent they want. That is their profit for the job, okay? Their general conditions include their overhead and all of their supervision and everything associated with them executing the project. So when we bid, when we, we are competitively bidding this to the general contractors, we're saying, look, here's the building, you tell us how you would staff it and how long you would take to build it. And if it's, if we show them a 10,000 square foot building and we build a 10,000 square foot building, then their fee and general conditions need to be what they are. If we come back and make it 100,000 square foot building, then their general conditions can change. But their general conditions, they know how they're going to staff the job and they know what that cost is to them. So that part of it, you can competitively bid and talk to references and see the other work that they've done to make that decision. Once they're on board, signing a contract with them does not mean that you're automatically signing a 10, 20, 30 or 40 million, $50 million GMP the day you go to contract. So going to contract with them really just legally gets them going. You know, they'll have a pre-construction fee that they charge to do this work in the beginning. You mentioned things like site work. We can accelerate our civil engineers. We can have them competitively bid that portion of the work ahead of everything else. We can say, hey, we don't like site contractor A, B and C, but we like contractors D, E and F. Go get numbers from them. You come back and make those decisions. You can do change orders to their contract before you go ahead and say, if it's $30 million, here's $30 million, you know, we hope it turns out. So there is flexibility and so the longer you wait to sign that GMP, obviously the more work we've done and the more dialed in that number should be. There should be a little bit less contingency, fewer allowances and fewer qualifications. So how that goes, we can determine.
Absolutely. And I think one thing Mr. Mayor would to remember is that this is, we have and will have a seat at the table from soup to nuts. So this isn't, we don't just pick the GC and say, and they work with KJ and let us know if we can help. We're part of that owner, contractor, architect team that will have a seat at the table from day one. And that's kind of, that's to me, the beauty of the CM at Risk process is that the benefit is really up to the day you break ground. Because that's where you see the benefit of the CM at Risk because you get accurate pricing that you can develop as a team, that GMP, you hit that GMP, we sign on the dotted line and then we can begin work immediately. And to your point, that's when we've got somebody on site every day going out and kicking dirt and making sure things are the way they need to be. All of those things will happen because I agree with you, this is a marquee, once in a generation project for this city and we can't leave it up to chance and not having the oversight.
When you submit, when you put out drawings, once the contractor is chosen, what percentage complete are they?
Well, the first time they get them, it might be 10%. So when we go, when we do the solicitation for them, it might be 10%.
Okay, so when they get something they can put their teeth into, how...
I mean, we'll get to a traditional schematic design level. I mean, Andy's right. I mean, all the value, not all the value, a lot of the value in that process is before we go turn dirt. You know, we can go do a, you know, 30% schematic design on the mechanical system and go to two really good subs and get good sub feedback. They know, they understand the process, they know they're going to have a chance at the project and they can give us good sub feedback. Both on price and on, hey, if you did it this way instead of that way, you might be able to save money. So it'll be at increments that we would do that.
Would it not be more cost effective to get design close to that 100%? And then there's no big deal about going to a hard bid.
And KJ can correct me, but you get close to that 100% absent the contractor's involvement, then what you're losing is time because the contractor's not been in lockstep with the process and is not in position to say, look, we need to size this generator that's got a 52 week lead time or we know that this particular, these windows are going to take a while to bring in. So what we're doing is we're getting this accurate pricing and accurate timing all running in concert up to the day we turn dirt.
And I think that's a more expensive route. I'm not, and I don't know how everybody else on council feels, but I have no issue with time if it takes longer to get more accurate drawings where you can get a more accurate figure. Because if I'm whoever, if I'm a masonry contractor, site, whatever, and you give me, and I get a set of drawings and they say, give me a price and we know that you're going to have to kind of read some things into these plans, I'm going to have my hard numbers and then I'm going to put in what I think I'm going to have to do and then I'm going to put in a pretty hefty contingency to cover that.
And at the subcontractor level early in the process, you're right. And the good GCs, if the masonry subcontractor doesn't do it, they do it for them. So the key is to hire a good general contractor that can help anticipate that. And you're right, as you move further along, again, we don't, we wouldn't go to contract for the full amount the day that they were interviewed. I mean, the masonry subcontractor might be well down the road and again, it might very well go in chunks where we get things, certain scopes of work developed, like we might, I mean, we're not making up 52 weeks. I mean, electrical gear still has a 50 or 60 week lead time. We might have to go to contract and just go buy some electrical gear and then sort of change order into the rest of it. It isn't a perfect system and if you don't manage it, just like any of the other systems, it can go wrong. So it's incumbent upon us to find the right general contractor that's been through this before. We've had some really, really great success with this and particularly with volatility in the market and wanting to have a little bit of control over some local preference for subcontractors. Again, y'all, hard bidding, you don't have, you don't have that opportunity.
And I'll also just anecdotally say this, and we wouldn't know for sure if we went to a hard bid, that what I'm about to say is accurate, but I have, I have, I think it's pretty accurate to say that the most qualified folks would not bid on this if we went, in fact, for the hard bid.
And I disagree with that. There's big outfits out there that they do hard bid and we do have control over subcontractors. Just like I said, I think, I think it's critical that the city has control. We maintain control over civil and then electrical.
So Councilman, what you're talking about in that situation is what we call like a multi-prime, where if I'm understanding you right, where y'all would manage, our civil engineer would design the scope of work, y'all would manage the procurement, you would hire a grading contractor, you would deliver to the general contractor essentially a pad ready site. That's...
Whatever we could work out, but I do think that we have control over civil, we have electrical, plumbing and HVAC because those, that's, you know, in the process, that's probably the most, more expensive things in construction that...
Yeah.
And...
I think the...
That's all I...
All right, yeah. Let's, we've spent half our time on the first section here. Let's, others about where we are now in the CM at Risk process that have got questions or need more information.
Just one thing. So KJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, what Councilman Everwood is saying is if, so like, you know, I'm very familiar with the CMAR process and going through this, but you can accomplish everything he's saying as long as the owner representative is involved. Like let's say you have bi-weekly meetings or weekly meetings with your design team. If the owner representative is in on those meetings, they're hearing the same thing that all the HVAC, electrical, everyone's saying the same thing. And then, you know, is that part of the plan or would you have a separate meeting outside of with owner representatives or would you...
No, I mean, we would, I mean, all to be determined. What we typically do is the project team, y'all's team with us, as the general contractor was bringing in their subcontractor bids, they'll have a, they'll have an 11 by 17 bid tab for each of the subcontractors. They go through, I mean, just like, just like if we were qualifying a general contractor, they'll go through and rectify scope and adjust and go back to them and say, you know, these guys are two blocks over, but they're $100,000 more expensive. That might be great or you might say, no, we need, so yeah, I mean, that's a very interactive process with your folks.
Yeah. I think it's very beneficial because it's a very fluid process and you're hearing it real time and you're not having civil engineers making decisions for a contractor. Contractor's there and says, well, there's a better way we can do this, here's our input.
Your points and concerns are well taken. I do, I do agree that the CM at Risk can accomplish a lot of that. So I think we work the process towards that and get maximum transparency for y'all and maximum flexibility.
Okay. This is a workshop forum and that's, we're gathering the information that we need. Let's go ahead and move on then to local and minority contractors.
So my understanding is that the city of Greer does not have a specific, in procurement code, does not have any designated targets for either local or women and minority owned businesses. To me, in both of those conversations, there are, there are two facets. The first, in that construction manager at risk process, we would ask, we would propose that the city ask contractors in their qualifications package, describe to us how you are going to ensure local participation in this project. Describe to us how you're going to find women and minority contractors. Describe to us what your mentor relationship experience and process is. Describe to us what projects you've done in the city of Greer in Spartanburg County and Greenville County. So on the qualification side, at a less objective level, we can steer the conversation and understand each of those candidates and how well they've done at those things in the past. Beyond that, we can set and we should set, I think, probably some specific goals for what those participations are. From a women and minority owned business perspective, a 10% goal seems like a good one for, from my perspective. For reference, the city of Charleston has a 20% goal that they have on projects and the county of Charleston has a 25%. I'm not a demographer. The demographics here are different than that. I think we would, again, try to find a contractor that can bring as much of that in as possible and perhaps set a goal of maybe 10% on the project for the minority women owned participation as a suggestion to y'all.
A goal, but that's not...
A goal, but that's not a disqualifying thing, is it?
We would propose that it's, that would be a goal. Again, you would try to find contractors that are good at it, and good at helping achieve that, and, and you can ask them, what's your, what's your record? I mean, just finished a project in Greenville where we had 12% participation, so that contractor has done it recently, right? But yeah, I, I would recommend a goal. I don't, I don't, I don't think you want to mandate those things, that those start to have cost implications. Again, I think the spirit of it is trying to engage, engage the community and engage more participation and support.
Well, I think I'm more concerned about quality than I am any of those considerations. It's important to involve everyone, but I want, I want someone that's qualified.
Yes, sir. And, and that's part of the process, is making sure that everyone is, folks have, folks have opportunity and, and they're qualified. And there are other things, there are mentor mentee relationships that are very successful. One of the challenges in a bigger project, there just aren't a lot of minority contractors that do, you know, pick a trade. So there, but there are a lot of smaller contractors to do that. So if you find a larger subcontractor that has and is willing to work with a smaller subcontractor that is a minority or woman owned business, that they, they essentially joint venture on it, and we've got lots of success stories where those kinds of things happen. Quality is the absolute top priority in that.
How do you define community? Because that's one of the things you just said, I mean.
So.
That's the second part.
Yep, that's, that's the second part, and, and it's really up to y'all. You know, we just did a little bit of, if, if you wanted to, if you, again, if you want to, we would recommend you set a goal for local participation, and, and that we would like to see this amount of the work executed by local folks. That definition of local could be Greenville and Spartanburg Counties, it could be a certain mile radius, 25 miles from here essentially covers Greenville and Spartanburg Counties, 50 miles gets basically the entire upstate, and then grabs Asheville and Shelby, 100 miles doesn't seem local, Aiken, Athens, Columbia, Charlotte. But, so, I think it, I think it just depends on how, how y'all view local and what the spirit of that is, to say it's an upstate firm or organization, or, look, we really want to support folks that, that do business in Spartanburg and Greenville Counties. That, that's a perfectly legitimate, and we would spell that out. Again, what would be your strategy for helping us achieve that, and that we'd set a goal, and, I mean, help measure their performance, the general contractor's performance based on, based on how they're doing against those goals. And it's the same issue, right? I mean, there, just because there's a local contractor that lays carpet doesn't mean that they're the one you want doing it, so we need to go through the same qualification and vetting process.
I think to Mr. Bettis' point, I'm, I'm probably as concerned about quality as I am location. I mean, I think having a goal is, a goal is realistic, but, you know, if, if the brick masons are in Asheville, then they're the best ones. I have no problem with that.
Yeah. But we do, I don't know the breakdown, we do lots and lots of work that have neither a minority and women owned business participation goal requirement or a local participation requirement. It is completely dependent upon the community that is doing the work.
Do you feel like it's a big ask to have that? I mean, I know there's a lot of agencies moving towards having some type of goal there. I mean, just to do state work, federal work, I mean, it's minimum of 10%. So, I mean, feedback, I know you said 12% was a area, are you able to say who, who that was, or?
I mean, I'd probably rather not.
Okay, that's fine. I know who it is, because I, I feel like, I already know.
But, I mean, I think where we see issues is where you start mandating and you start pushing those goals higher and higher. I, I mean, it's chicken and the egg, right? You're not going to get better women and minority contractors if you don't give them opportunities, but there also just aren't a lot of them. So it's, it's just helping navigate that balance, and I, a goal seems like a reasonable way to set something that's a little aspirational, and if you don't achieve it, you don't. Again, there's lots of, lots of municipalities that don't do it, so there's certainly, there's certainly no.
So to, to clarify a little bit from KJ, if we did a 10% W N B E goal, not a mandate, I'm going to make this very clear, we are hoping to achieve 10% of this project will be completed by women and minority owned businesses. The other part of this would be, is how do we define what local is? Okay? Do we, do we do a, a 25, 30 mile radius around Greer, and then of that project, 10, 15% of the project completed by those that we consider local based on that geographical area?
Right.
Right? And that's kind of the guidance I was hoping to achieve from council on, as we develop the solicitation for proposals, that we're very clear on this, that the city has a goal of 10% for W N B E, that city has a goal of 10, 15% for local participation defined as X. And that's what I'm hoping to have here very clearly from you tonight as we move forward.
This, this is not my world, so I'm kind of trying to wrap my mind around this. Is this, like, literally if there's two contractors and literally everything else is exactly the same from the cost to the quality to everything else, like, this is the tiebreaker?
Nah, I, I don't think it's tiebreaker, because the, the percentage is a goal. And, and for all practical purposes, you know, not to disparage our, you know, friends in Salina, Kansas, but we've got a lot of talent locally, both women and minority owned businesses and contractors that can do this work, and to be honest with you, I'd, I'd be surprised if more than 30% of the project is done by people out of the state of South Carolina. So all that notwithstanding, I do believe that we're going to be able to just naturally accomplish both as a goal percentage. But I do think that we need to be very clear with our, with our proposed contractors, that this is an expectation, that we have set a goal and we really genuinely hope to meet that goal, and that's why we're presenting to you some proposed percentages and mile radiuses that we can talk to our contractors about.
Now, the percentages, is that dollar percentages?
Nope. Yeah, would be, that would be dollar percentage of the project.
Dollar percentage?
Yes, sir.
I would say I get, my, like, my preference is that we get the best quality work for the best price. And if that ends up being 100% women and minority owned businesses, that's great. That is my, that is my concern.
We may not meet the goal.
Otherwise, otherwise, it feels like we're patting ourselves on the back.
Well, we may not meet the goal, but it's not a, a deal killer if we don't.
That's right.
Anyone in this business that we're talking about is going to expect this. You don't get a job now.
So in other words, if we're saying this is a goal without the process, it's for the.
It's not a, it's not an eliminating criterion. I'm going to be very clear about this. This is not an eliminating criterion, and we are going to go, we're, we're going to do substandard work or get a substandard contractor to meet some artificial goal. I'm going to be very clear about that. That's not what we're hoping for.
It's okay that this, that it feels this way to me, then I don't, I don't understand what the discussion is.
Well, I'd say, I'd say one of the things that, that, that might help you, that, that, I'm glad it's a goal, but if I'm somebody, if I'm a sub who really wants this, and I see that in there. He, he alluded to the fact of, of doing a, a joint venture together. So you may have someone who is a minority owned business, and they just do a joint venture, and they, they might be doing, this dollar wise, a third of it, and then that would qualify them. But is that what, you know, if, if you're looking at that, is that what you're trying to accomplish? Are you trying to accomplish all kinds of diversity on the job, or are you just trying to hit a goal? So.
My goal is to get this built as quality as can be for the best possible price.
I think that's everybody's.
Yeah.
I really do. And, and as I said, you, you just don't get around setting those goals nowadays. You, you don't get around that. You've got to set that goal, you may not achieve it, but it's got to be there.
I, I heard you say that municipalities.
They gotta be there, no, the, Mr. Bettis is, I think, what I, what I think Mr. Bettis is saying is there's an expectation that the local government have a goal. So not, but that it's not a requirement. If y'all looked at us tonight and said, just build the best project, and we don't care who does it, they all come from Rapid City, South Dakota, great, we just want the best we can get, then that's what we run off and do. But if, you know, if to Mr. Bettis' point, the practice has been for local government to set a goal, then this is the time to give staff guidance on what that goal would be.
And we would, we would, I would recommend that you do that. I think it's, I think that your constituents would appreciate that you're trying to involve the local community, and you're trying to involve everyone in the business and, in the business community, with the caveat that this isn't an excuse to go hire subpar, subpar, you know, companies, you're, you're just genuinely trying to, to spread out that opportunity, right?
All right, we're, we are running short on time. Let's, anybody else in, in terms of questions or comments in regards to, to this subject? Let's, let's move on and use our remaining time then for expectations, ideas, and other, other things related to the project.
And I'm going to have Mike, I'm going to give somebody else the opportunity to listen.
Let KJ talk about all the fun stuff, and I'll talk about architecture, which is why we're all here, right? And what I'd like to maybe start a conversation with or, or, or encourage is to hear from you guys about what, what you feel this building needs to represent, how it needs to be represented, really from a visual perspective, but also from a functionality perspective. I know there's a lot of program that, that eventually will, will define for, within the walls of, of this new facility, and it's really exciting. But we also, I want to make sure that we hear from not only you, but, but the people of Greer, who you all represent, about what this building needs to be. I, I've just recently started to scratch on the surface of the history of Greer, because that's where I like to start off, when I'm thinking about a, a new facility, a new building, small, big, whatever it might be. And obviously, there's, there's a tremendous amount of history in this area, both from its upbringing through the textile industry, through where we are now with some of the high-tech, very global, international companies that have influence in, in the city. So I'd like to hear from you guys about, you know, what, what you feel like this building needs to represent. I, I heard early on in the conversation, or earlier in the meeting, the, that this building is generational and career defining, and, you know, it's going to help define my career, so I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what we're trying to achieve here, and, and hear from you about, about this building. So I'll just open up the floor and, and be all ears, figuratively and, and literally.
Here's your chance, counsel.
And don't be bashful.
And don't be bashful.
Yeah. All right, timer's on.
Do you have only got 20 minutes?
I, I like the idea that, that, you know, everything that, that we do needs to show who we are, where we came from, where we are, and where we're, where we're going. Well, man, that's just really, you know, well, you have already started checking on the history, so you know it's, it's textiles, it's agriculture outside, but then the businesses within the city supported that, railroad, and, but, but I guess the best thing for me to do is say, okay, here's two examples. This building we're in, I think the, the architects who did this hit their mark. And if you've got, and you can ask Ann, pictures of the old kids' planet, that was, that they went to the elementary schools, and elementary schools' kids, they put everything in there, and that's what we built. And so that's what, we're, we're not, these are real generalities, but we are Greer. We are, we are nobody else. That's, that's who we are. We're not trying to be anybody else. We're trying, we are Greer, and, and that's, so with, with, with this facility, athletics, we, we value athletics. And Greer has a very rich history of athletics from, from the textile leagues, high school leagues, all the sports. So I think there's you a few, whatever you want to call it, but it, it's got to represent Greer.
Yeah. You're not the first that I've heard "we are Greer" from. I've heard that from several people, just asking and, around in our office and so forth, so I, I think that's a phrase that, that really sticks.
I think one of the main challenges you're going to have is, this is, in some regards, a dual purpose facility. This is going to be our citizens' building. It's, this is being built for our citizens, but it also has to have a ancillary purpose, and that is going to be to be flexible enough in terms of the use of the space that it can appeal in some regards to sports tourism. Now, I'm not exactly sure what that is at this point, and I think that's something that this council and our community needs to, needs to weigh in on in some regard, but it, it, it can't be a single source facility. And, you know, having, having looked over the last year or two at, at facilities, large and small, across the United States, there seems to be the ability to create flexible space. And I think we're going to have, have to have that, because we're going to need rooms for seniors to meet in, and we're going to have to have rooms for summer day camp for children first, second, and third grade. We're going to have to have facilities nice enough for a southeastern or national volleyball championship, and we're going to have to have a court nice enough for, you know, a under 12 basketball game. So I think the challenge is going to be in the diversity of the product on the inside is opposed maybe to what the outside looks like.
No, you're, you're right about that. I mean, it, it used to be everybody built roller skating rinks, and, you know, that kind of went away, but now you see it's kind of coming back. I, you know, I'm not saying we put a roller skating rink in, I'm just saying that it is, it's a challenge.
Yeah. Others?
I do agree that flexibility is going to be key to, to the success of this project. Obviously, volleyball, basketball are staples as far as youth athletics and, and even adult athletics, but, I mean, who saw the, the pickleball craze coming, you know, years ago? And, and who knows what the next craze is going to be? And, and we want to make sure that, that we don't design this into a, a corner so that it can't ebb and flow with, with how those markets also move up and down. So I think that, that's going to be key.
And, and, and I think that's going to come from this understanding of who we are as a community, because to Mr. Airwood's point, you know, if, if, if we based what we thought was popular 25 years ago as opposed today, we would miss the mark entirely. If we, if we did it 10 years ago, we, we'd miss the mark entirely. And so we, we need to be sensitive to that as, as well, too. I mean, to your point, 10 years ago, who saw pickleball coming? Who would have thought that one of the largest sports tourism businesses in our city is an ice skating rink? So you just, you know, we've got to be open to that and to the community for, for their input.
Yeah.
And I think you can lean on our staff, too, to help you navigate that process. They're well aware of the current programming we have, the demand, where we, I mean, that's why this whole thing came about. I mean, if you looked at, at the Victor Gym that we had, I mean, it was substandard in, in just about every way. And so we recognize, we, we'd like to have more space to have basketball games and to host a volleyball tournament, to have a walking track, and to have a place where people could work out and to meet, and, young or old. And so there's just a lot of things that are going to be going on here, and I think the challenge with this is, is we're working within a budget, right? I mean, it'd be great to, you know, to build this thing gigantic and, and have tons of courts and, and thousands of people in there at one time, but obviously, that we are Greer, kind of to Jay's point, and there are limitations, and so we do have a budget, and it's going to be interesting to see, you know, what you bring us and, and how you can try to blend all these elements, and again, taking the feedback from staff, community, from council, and appreciate all the work that you've done so far, and look forward to working with you going forward.
So maybe you're going to want to add a hallway that doesn't go anywhere, that'll be the next annex, the 25 to 50,000 square foot annex.
Flexibility, flexibility.
Well, I would, in addition to all of the, the athletic parts of it, I think it should be flexible enough to where it could host a good, a good amount of people for an event, and maybe even some bleacher capability for some type of entertainment. I think in order to make the thing viable year round, it's got to be highly flexible, in, in my opinion.
And to that point, Mayor mentioned this, I don't know, it's been a while, but, and I know we've kind of gone away from this idea, but we could at least pre-plan or do some, not shelters, but open sided buildings as a, as a campus type thing. some, not shelters, but open-sided buildings as a campus-type thing. So you're not limited with whatever you're doing is inside.
Yeah, I think the site plan is going to be critical.
Yeah.
Critical. All right, others? We've got just a few more minutes, and we're going to wrap up the workshop. Ideas or comments or questions?
Do you have existing facilities you're going to draw inspiration from, places that you've worked at as far as other cities are concerned, where you could maybe bring some of the elements that you designed into their facilities and give us some opportunities to see what those look like?
From an exterior design perspective?
It'd just be interesting.
Or just from a facility perspective?
Well, just to see kind of how, you know, other folks have thought about their space, you know, because a lot of cities have similar needs in that, you know, if it's for basketball, if it's for volleyball, or whatever it looks like. And, you know, kind of to Riley's point, maybe it has the ability to transition into something where you could host a large event. I mean, I'm sure y'all have already done, you were selected because you've done similar projects, correct?
Right.
So I think it would be good to take a look at some of those and see how those have kind of come into fruition, and maybe even to get feedback from the facility managers and the people that are working on those and say, yeah, we were able to accomplish X, Y, Z, but, you know, maybe we could have improved design here, here, and here. Would have liked to have seen dollars spent in better spots.
Yeah, that, for me, is part of the initial design process. You know, we're not going to just throw an idea on paper and say, here it is. What I particularly like to do is work with, you know, case studies, projects that we've done or other projects, you know, regionally, nationally, whatever it might be, that I feel like have a piece, or there's something of that project that fits to this project. And we'll meet and we'll discuss it. And then even making site visits to other facilities. You know, we continuously will take groups to other facilities or peer institutions and, you know, really just go in and experience the space, but then talk to the end-users and have that discussion right there. You know, what works, what doesn't work, what do you wish you could have done? Let us, you know, sort of build off of what you've done. And that's, you know, part of the initial design process, in my opinion. So I hope that all of you be a part of that process.
Well, we're not above stealing a good idea from anybody, so keep in mind.
We're not going to reinvent the wheel here, I promise you. But we will make it Greer.
Yeah, counsel, let's thank Matt Millen and President Smith for being with us this evening. This is literally the first time that we have met, and I suspect over the course of the next 12 or 18 months, as various different committees, as council, as staff, as the entity that we'll be working with, we will have a host of opportunities for input and direction as we move forward. And so we thank you for this opportunity and look forward to upcoming opportunities as well, too. We know that we'll be involved in that. And we, as a council, will have a little deeper discussion at some point in time about some of the comments that were made, particularly maybe in the forums and fashion of where we want to go. And from there, hopefully, we will develop a project that will be worthy of "we are Greer." How about that?
Yep.
Okay? All right. Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it. Counsel, that concludes... Mr. Mayor, man, any additional information or comments at this point?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, with that, then, we have finished almost on the hour. I am going to call the workshop to a close.